January nineteenth, two thousand twenty one at five thirty. First on the agenda is to approve the amendments from last meeting.
It'll be a special meeting from December thirtieth and the regular meeting from January fourth.
I'll motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second, John.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is hearing of public concerns. Mayor, do we have anybody calling in or there?
Um, not this time. If the phone rings, I will let you know.
Thank you. Next up is item number three, the clerk's treasures report. Lori?
Counsel has been presented with the clerk treasures report for the month ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty.
I'll move to approve the report, Rick.
I'll second, Judy.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is item number four and ordinance. Lori, will you please read?
Ordinance number one, two thousand twenty one. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasure to issue change order number one and final for the project known as twenty twenty asphalt program.
Good evening. We're finally wrapping up last year's project. We finally got their final invoice here actually last week. So what we're doing is we're asking for an eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollar deduct. I'm real happy with that considering it was almost a six hundred thousand dollar project. And when you're putting two inches of asphalt on to be that close, I mean, we're talking sub-millimeter accuracy. So I'm pleased with it. I request you suspend the rules and go ahead and pass this so we can get the project wrapped up.
Anytime you have a decrease, I'll vote for that. I vote to suspend. This is Judy.
I'll second, Jim. Jim will second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, Rick.
I'll second, Jim.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Item number five ordinance, Lori, will you please read?
Ordinance number two, two thousand twenty one. An ordinance amending and authorizing an agreement for the payment of the city of Brian income tax incentive for Dustin Schlotter and Todd Schlotter, members of Schlotter Investments LLC, and as owners and members respectively of OBIC, SNS Directional Boring and Advanced Rehabilitation LTD.
Can I address that?
Yes.
So you may recall to promote economic development and growth within the city of Brian, we had provided a income tax incentive to Schlotter Investments for the new business out in Industrial Park One. And as you may know, due to COVID and other things that happened last year, they had their open house mid to end of November. I think some of you were there, so you know that they really didn't get this started within Brian until very late in the year twenty twenty. The original income tax incentive was to start in tax year twenty twenty. But because of the late start of business, it really would not give them any benefit for that year. So what we're asking is for an extension of one year on that in tax, that tax incentive. Not that we're extending it more than five years, but we're starting it in tax year twenty twenty one rather than in twenty twenty.
I'll move to suspend, Rick. I'll second. John?
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to-
Go ahead, go ahead, Judy.
I'll move to approve. This is Judy.
I'll second, Jim.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is item number six. Lori, will you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three, two thousand twenty one. An ordinance to authorize membership in the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, HGAC pursuant to Ohio Revised Code nine dot four eight and to authorize the mayor to enter into an, in our local contract cooperative purchasing agreement, thereby waiving the competitive bidding process prescribed by Ohio Revised Code one twenty seven dot one six B one.
I don't know if Tyson is on or not, but he had asked me to prepare this legislation. This is an ability through the Ohio Revised Code for the city to purchase through an intergovernmental agreement. And so we have done this before with Sourcewell. It's similar to what we do with the purchasing program through the state of Ohio. It allows us to waive the bidding process by purchasing items through the intergovernmental cooperative. So this is just an opportunity to purchase through that program and Tyson, if he's there, can talk about why he wants to join. Tyson, we can't hear you.
We hear you.
You look good, you just don't sound like you.
May have to change your speaker. Sometimes that happens to me.
I, I'll just, I'll just say something and Tyson cannot decide yes or no. I believe that this is a, an agreement that he'd like to have in place as they're looking at purchasing a leaf, a street leaf pickup apparatus. So I think this agreement is so that in the future, when he comes to council to request to go through this process for a leaf apparatus, this is a, a source that they're looking through.
And I would add that this was an approved budgeted item for the twenty twenty one budget. I think the budget committee can talk about the leaf blower with council members or leaf machine and the rust that is on it and its end of life. He had pictures to prove it was definitely at its end of service. Tyson, thumbs up or thumbs down if we covered everything for you. Okay.
I'll motion to suspend, Jim.
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve. John?
I'll second, Judy.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is item number, excuse me, item number seven. Lori, will you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number four, two thousand twenty one. An ordinance establishing the pay rate scale for seasonal workers in the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Brian, making it effective January nineteen, twenty twenty one, and rescinding ordinance number five, twenty twenty.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Ben.
Good evening, Ben.
You have our pay scale for seasonal part-time employees. The reason that this has to be adjusted is due to the change in wage. So therefore, when they change a minimum wage, obviously, we have to go back through and make changes to our, our pay scale for seasonal part-time employees. So the sheet you've found in front of you reflects that change. And then some other incremental changes to keep things staggered throughout the Parks and Recreation Department.
I'll move to suspend, John.
I'll second, Jim.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt, Rick.
I'll second, Judy.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is- Go ahead. Next up is item number eight, a resolution. Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number five, two thousand twenty one. A resolution authorizing Kerry Slade as delegate and Richard Long as alternate to represent the city of Brian as a member of the Board of Directors of the Ohio Municipal Electric Association in two thousand twenty one.
Yes, counsel, Brian Mayor has been on the OMEA board for a number of years. And since it's an amp subsidiary, we have a BPA member voted on by the BPA to be the alternate. I can know of one occasion a year, the prayer breakfast that usually takes place at Wesley Church, that the mayor delivers a proclamation for. So it's a good time to have a delicate, a delegate in case I can't be at an, an OMEA meeting. With that, last meeting, BPA did request that Dick Long be the alternate for that. So I'm asking that counsel approve both of those for the committee for OMEA.
Yeah, I'll motion to suspend, Jim.
I'll second, John.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Motion being approved, Judy.
Second, Rick.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Up next is item number nine, a resolution. Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number six, two thousand twenty one. A resolution authorizing the fire chief of the city of Brian to apply for grants for the city of Brian Fire Department.
Hey, good evening, counsel. This resolution is, just like every other year, we come to you asking that, uh, give us the authority to apply for these various grants that you see before you.
I'll move to suspend, John.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve, Jim.
I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Up next, we have, um, item number ten, a resignation from the police department.
Hello, good evening. I'm here to present Patrolman Plots's resignation. He writes, this comes with a heavy heart as it to, it was my goal to retire from the Brian Police Department. With the events in the PD last several months, I feel it's my best, uh, that it is best that I turn my, turn in my resignation. My last day will be January twenty fourth, twenty twenty one.
I move to approve with regret and we'll talk a little more later about stuff. I'll second, Rick.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, with tremendous regret. Next up is item number eleven, a retirement.
Counsel, you should have a letter in front of you from John Court Gosha. Stated his intention to retire from the Parks and Recreation Department on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty one. Court has been with our department for twelve years. And I ask that you accept his request for retirement towards the end of the year.
Do those two need to be separate, Mayor? Or can eleven and twelve be put, can we accept the, the retirement and at the same time, accept permission to post?
I think for Lori, it would be easier if you did two separate motions.
Okay, thank you. I, I will, um, make a motion to, excuse me, I'm sorry. I know, to accept the retirement with regret for court.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Next up is item number twelve, Ben.
Yeah, having got through that, I would request that you allow the Parks and Recreation Department to go ahead and post of arborist, horticulturist for the city of Brian and try to get court's replacement in-house as soon as possible. Therefore, we could have a little bit of time together with court, um, learning the operation. It is a specialized operation, therefore it makes a little bit of tough, um, just to kind of hand it off to somebody else. So I would ask that you allow, post the position. Our hope would be to have somebody new on board maybe as soon as April first, um, go from there.
This is Judy. I move to approve.
This is Rick. I second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Ben, you're up again on item number thirteen.
In front of you, you should have three wage change requests from the Parks Department. Two of them happen to be my preschool teachers that are affected by the change in the wage ordinance from earlier this evening. So you have both of those and then also the change for court, training his replacement, um, through November.
I'll move to approve, Jim.
I'll second, John.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Up next is item number fourteen. I don't know.
Hello, I am here to present the members for the volunteer police officers fund for the city of Brian. The member, the board members are going to continue to be Judy Ayers and Richard Hoopy. They both agreed to that. Myself and Patrolman Beers for the police department. And this year, we're adding Cliff Waggle as the reserve officer for that because Cliff is, when our reserves, it works closely with everybody involved. So Cliff said he would do that for us. So those are the members for that board.
I move to approve, Jim.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next up is item number fifteen, appointment to volunteer firefighters dependents.
Yes, counsel, again this year, I've come before you to ask you to approve the list of names before you for the volunteer firefighters dependence fund for twenty twenty one.
I move to approve, John.
I'll second, Jim.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy? Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is item number sixteen, appointment for the mayor.
Yes, this is an annual renewal for an appointment for myself to the executive council of Mommy Valley Planning Organizations. And I would request a motion to accept that appointment.
This is Judy. I have, I'll make a motion.
I'll second. John?
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, we can go around the room and see if anybody wants to address any concerns. Anybody in the city?
Uh, we don't have a concern, but I'd like to introduce you to two new hires in the city. I'll let them introduce themselves.
All right, Gary Moore, Lakesley. My point is, just a police chief here, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I think I can bring a lot to this department and I'm looking forward to meeting everybody and I just want to say thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Greg Ruskey. I'm the newly appointed captain. I spent my previous nineteen years at the Williams County Sheriff's Office and I'm looking forward to working here at the city of Brian. Thank you.
Welcome to you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else from the city? If not, I'm going to go right across my little board with my Brady Bunch family. Next up is Hoopy.
Oh, well, I-
Yo, I asked a guy Brady tonight.
Okay. Couple of people that I want to just recognize for their, for their efforts, first one, starting with Court Gosha. The city has been very privileged to have him on board and I know he's not leaving just yet, but, uh, he has done a lot for the city as the arborist and, uh, I just want to thank him and a personal thank you because he did a lot to try to, to save an oak tree that I have on my property and that is actually on the city property as well. And, and he's been great to work with and he's going to be sorely missed and I'm sure we'll, we'll bring somebody in that will, will be good. But we're going to miss Court. And the other person is Tony Plots. And, uh, I really didn't know Tony, uh, when we decided to start to have the SROs. And it didn't take long for a lot of feedback to come back, well, what a great SRO that Tony made. He had a great rapport with the teachers and the students and he was sorely missed when he decided to go for the captain's position. But I, I know that the teachers understood that he was trying to work his way up. Unfortunately, that didn't work out and, uh, you know, he was only there for a few months. And they were hoping that maybe he would come back to the school as an SRO and that didn't work out either. So, um, I just want to wish Tony all the best. Uh, thank you so very much. We're going to miss him being a veteran member of our police force, especially when we have such a young police force right now. And, uh, again, I wish him all the best in the future and, uh, thank you very much for your service. And finally, uh, what I wanted to say was tomorrow is going to be a big day. And I'm just praying that, uh, we will be able to inaugurate our new president peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Judy?
Basically the same thing. I just want to wish Tony good luck, whatever he does, he will be missed. I'd like to say to Court, you're going to be very much missed. We aren't going to lose you yet, but it's going to come very quickly. I also would like to welcome our new officers. I hope this helps our police department get some new, uh, blood in there so we can increase our officers. And last I go with Rick, please pray for our country tomorrow.
Thank you, Judy. Up next is Jim.
I, I just want to say thank you to all the department heads. Our city looks beautiful as usual. I want to thank Court for his, uh, service, uh, over the years, our parks and our trees is, uh, is second to none. Tony, uh, I wish you the best in your future endeavors. And, and thank you for your twelve years of service. And, uh, and I'd like to welcome again Gary and Greg to the police department. We look forward to, uh, I, I, great things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next up is John.
Yeah, um, I think it's worth, um, some redundancy, uh, to, uh, make the statement that, uh, a big thank you to both Mr. Plots and Mr. Gosha. I don't, didn't know Tony as well as I know, uh, Court. But both of them, uh, with their years of service and their expertise will be missed. And we certainly appreciate all that you've done for Brian and, and, um, Mr. Plots's case, wish him very much well in, in future endeavors. Also, I'd like to welcome, very excited about Mr. Moore and Mr. Ruskey, uh, bringing, um, a lot of experience uh, along with Chief Chappa. And, and I agree very much with Judy in terms of, um, continuing to build a very competent, mature, good, um, police force. I think we all need to be very, um, glad that we have people that are willing to step up and take those kind of roles. As we all know, uh, what just occurred in the last twenty-four hours with Toledo. Protecting and serving the community does mean putting your life on the line, um, pretty much every day. And, uh, a lot of people say, well, yeah, but not in Brian. Uh, actually, yes, uh, in Brian and all over. So I want to give a big thank you to the police department and, uh, look forward to that, uh, department continuing to grow, uh, and, and develop. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up, Laura, do you have anything?
I would just like to extend my, um, best wishes to Court, which I'm looking forward to another beautiful summer of his flowers around town. And to Court, to Tony as well. I've never seen anyone who could deliver news like Tony could with a smile on his face. It sometimes wasn't the best of news, but he could make you feel like it was going to be okay regardless. Also, I would extend, um, my best wishes and good luck to Captain Ruskey and Assistant Chief Moore, where I'm really excited to have him in the police department.
Thank you. Miranda, would you like to add anything?
I'd like to say congrats to Court and best wishes, wishes on his retirement when it gets here. And also will miss Tony Plots very much. I think he was just perfect for the SRO position. And I know that they're going to really miss him in the schools and wish him the best in whatever his future endeavors are. And also would like to welcome Greg and Gary. They're no strangers to me coming from other departments, but excited to have them working for Brian PD. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, um, I would like to echo all of you. I was too hopeful that Tony could fill the SRO position if it were posted and he, um, decided to choose for that. So I know that the school will miss his smile, um, and his positive attitude with the kids. Also, um, we're not losing Court just yet and I'm not ready to, but we are very hopeful that, um, through the application process, we find a good person for him to train, um, so that there can be some continuity within the city because we have some of the most beautiful parks in Northwest Ohio and that's something that we are very proud of. I, um, started my morning very, um, upbeat, giving the oath of office to Assistant Chief Moore and Captain Ruskey. And they have been here all day and wanted to stick around and introduce themselves to all of you, so I thank them for that. A couple of things that we've worked on or I've worked on with other partners within the community, I just want to say, we've had several days of no sunshine, which makes everyone a little less happy and cheerful. Coupled with the vaccine snafus that we have seen through the community as well as the pandemic continuing. So there are a group of individuals that I am very proud to be a part of that are working on a campaign. And later in the week, you will start seeing things that are called High Five Thrive. And, um, we will start as the group kind of building that out through Williams County. And we will start as the group, kind of building that out through Williams County. And it's a way to promote the conversations we're having about mental illness, just the depression and the sadness that people are feeling that don't normally suffer from those things, and to uplift our local community businesses and community partners. And so I'm really proud to be a part of that group, and everybody's been working hard to roll this out in a few short weeks. The other thing that was very interesting today, there were actually people in council chambers. We had some of the local restaurants up here to do a promotional video for them to encourage Bryan residents to get them through this winter, whether it be dine-in, takeout, and remember to leave a tip for their waitstaff. And that was something I partnered with the chamber and BMU for. And we had about ten business owners show up. The script was written for them. And we're hopeful that BMU can put together a good video for them, because they need some help, and we need to make sure we remind the community that it is all of our responsibilities to put the money into those businesses to keep them afloat in the next several months while we're all still dealing with this. So with that, I appreciate you letting me have the floor, and always, if you guys have any questions during the week, please do reach out.
Thank you. I'd like to run a short, quick meeting, as most of you may notice. So I don't like a lot of doing things triplicate or duplicate. So I just want to wish Court the best in his retirement. Welcome, Gary and Greg. Support by local. And lastly, I would like to wish Tony Plots the best of luck. I know when I found out that he was resigning, I tried to talk him into staying more than once, and told him to please give it at least six months and see if he could change his mind. Unfortunately, I couldn't get him to change his mind. So with that, I do wish him the best of luck in future endeavors. He's going to be sadly missed as an SRO and as a patrolman. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make-
Jim? I'll second, Rick.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.